Hour of seven o'clock having arrived, I will call this meeting of the Hastings Planning Commission to order. It is June 25th, 2018, and this is a regular meeting of the Hastings Planning Commission. The first item on the agenda is the oath of office for our new commissioner, Emily Best.
Okay, thank you very much. Turn the microphone on there if you don't. Thanks.
When it's green, is it? Okay.
Okay, wonderful. Emily, if you could stand up, please. Repeat after me, raise your right hand. I, Emily Best.
I, Emily Best.
Do affirm.
Do affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the state of Minnesota.
Of the state of Minnesota.
And the charter.
And the charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the city of Hastings.
Of the city of Hastings.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of planning commissioner.
The duties of planning commissioner.
For the city of Hastings.
For the city of Hastings.
Counties of Dakota and Washington.
Counties of Dakota and Washington.
And state of Minnesota.
And state of Minnesota.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Congratulations, Commissioner.
Thank you.
You. Yeah.[82.18][82.18][applause] Welcome to the commission.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our June 11th meeting. Commissioners, do you have any additions or corrections to the minutes as presented in your packet?
Move to approve.
Commissioner Alpa moves for approval. Do I have a second?
Second to approve.
Second from Commissioner Seibernaller. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the minutes are approved. One item on our agenda tonight is a review of our 2040 Comprehensive Plan, or at least a section of it, right? Not the whole thing. And staff report from Justin Forte.
Thank you, Chair Dever. I'll go over what we're going to be looking for the commission to provide to staff on this. Our Comprehensive Plan is the policy document that details the vision and goals that the city of Hastings outlines, and the steps they'd like to take to achieve that vision. Our Comprehensive Plan guides future decisions regarding physical and economic character of the city. It's kind of a 30,000-foot view of the city. It doesn't focus a great deal on specific properties or specific problems, but rather it's a general guiding document to keep us on course over the next decade or two. It's an updated existing plan called the 2030 Comprehensive Plan that was adopted. It was finished in 2008, but it's technically adopted in 2010. It's still very valid due to the slow growth that we've seen since that time. We did spend a lot of resources at that time developing that plan from the ground up, and we spent a lot of the resources this time reaching out to the community to assure that the plan is in sync with the public's direction. The 19-member steering committee was volunteers from the community. He spent over a year with staff and consultants getting deep into the specifics of the community feedback, data, and other updates for the plan. The committee also included members of our city commissions, including the current and the former chair of the Planning Commission. We wouldn't expect all the commissions to be able to read all 1,000 pages of the plan and become experts in it, but what we're looking for at this point is your approval of the direction of the plan as it relates to the issues that come before this body. That's why we highlighted the land use chapter of the Planning Commission, of the plan, and, but included a link to the full plan for background information. On this screen, you can see that there's several plan elements. The ones that are in green are required by the Metropolitan Council, and the two that are kind of grayed out are options that the city has elected to include in the plan. The, kind of the key of the plan, the cornerstone, if you will, would be the land use plan, which is the kind of the bones of the plan and the whole general purpose of it, but it touches on many other issues, including transportation, water resources, parks and trails, housing. Economic competitiveness is a first-grade element that we have added in addition to resilience, and then the implementation chapter. I'll go through the timeline that the project has been going through. We began in May 2017 with our first Conference of Planning Committee meeting. What we did at that point was we reviewed the existing plan and the other plans that we have adopted in the, in the city for neighborhood plans, corridor plans, and neighborhood plans. We got new, new data from the Metropolitan Council that we base our plan on. It's kind of the future projections for the city of Hastings, and a lot of data. And at that time, we also launched the project website. And then in June, we continued working on the plan, reviewing those plans. In July, we opened up an online survey for the community. We also launched a crowdsourced online mapping tool. I'll go over both of those items in a little bit. We held our first pop-up meeting at Rivertown Days in July. In August, we held a public workshop, kind of like a kickoff to the project with the community looking for public input. We also, in August, had a joint council and planning commission workshop where we did a SWOT analysis. In September, we had key stakeholder interviews that I'll, I'll touch on. Then in December, actually at the very end of November, we did have our second pop-up meeting. I'll go over that as well. We had a draft open house this past May, 2018, and in June now, we are receiving input from the commissions for different elements of the Comprehensive Plan. And then the next step would be in July, on July 9th, we're going to be going to the city council for a workshop to review the draft plan. After that point, we would send the draft plan to the adjacent communities and some government organizations to review the plan for comment, and after that, we would hold a public hearing and adopt the plan. One of our events was a holiday hoopla event. We had a booth at the Spiral Brewery downtown on November 25th. We had a lot of people that were coming through there, and we had some opportunities for them to provide input on the plan. One of the things we had was a board called My Wish for Hastings, and people could fill out a poster board with what they wanted for Hastings. And on the right side of the screen is all the comments that we had received from that. I'll briefly go through those. They want downtown to keep thriving, more craft beer, skate park, cycle across, senior housing with balconies, decorate riverfront with lights, grow with character, Hudson Building to be completed, seafood restaurant, healthy, happy people, indoor park, target to stay, stop smoking, more biking, walking trails, water park, everyone is happy and love at Christmas, more families to move in, better streets, 100 puppies in a pet store, and more housing for young families. At Rivertown Days last year, we had a booth set up there. John and one of our consultants manned that, and we had opportunities for input, giveaway. We also had flyers we passed out. And on the right side of the screen is just kind of an example of how this plan came together. The first, the top of that shape there in the red would be the input from engagement activities, like I've mentioned. Then we reviewed existing plans to see what our direction has already been, especially for specific areas, and then to boil those down to what we want, our vision and goals and policies, to, to realize all those expectations. So we started off with data from Met Council, just kind of some general data that they provided, and data we have ourselves, of course, is 8,200 square acres of our city limits, which is 13 square miles. The population has doubled since 1970, and 19% of that happened between 2000 and 2010, likely in the beginning of that period. Our demographics, broken down by age, shows a couple of unique anomalies. One is that our age, even though we're kind of known as being an older community, our population from 65 and older drops down significantly. One thing that we have heard from a lot of the community recently going through this Comprehensive Plan is that a lot of people say that we need more senior housing, and so possibly they're leaving to find that somewhere else. There's also a very low population from 15 to 19, which may be from housing issues, or maybe just a lot of kids at that age are, are leaving for college. Our population through time from the 70s started with about 12,000, and it roughly doubled in 2016 to 20, about 23,000 now. Oddly, though, the household size only went from 3,000, or went from 3,000 all the way to 9,000, which is almost tripling the households. And I think it's kind of evident, looking at this diagram, from 1990, the average household size in Hastings went from 2.76 people down to 2.42 people. And on this pie chart, you can see that, this is for the Comprehensive Plan, this is, oh no, this is, this is from data from the Met Council and, and other, and other inputs, but 28% of the people identify as living alone, 8.5% live in a household that is a non-family structure, and 35% are families without children. About 27%, the two pieces of pie on the left side, are families with children. The purple one is married families, and unmarried families is in orange. We held stakeholder focus groups in September. There's roughly 25 people participated in those. With individuals, there's, there's about 20 to 25-minute sessions, and then hour-long sessions for groups. Some examples of the individuals that we had there were business owners, developers, realtors, Dakota County CDA, county transportation, historic preservationists, natural resource-type people, and medical field. We also had some groups of individuals, including artists and athletic associations. And there was, there was two more groups. I don't have them on here. Another thing we did was we had this crowdsourced mapping application that you could do on a desktop or a tablet, or, or even a phone. You'd pull up the, this, it's from the project website, but you'd pull up a city map, and then you can locate on the map an area that you wanted to make a comment on. It can either be a comment of something you liked, or something that needed to change, or pretty much anything you wanted to do. You could also comment on other peoples. Just some examples of these, somebody commented on the great new downtown housing, which was art space, lofts. There's also, somebody mentioned that there's a high-profile corner on, on 61 Vermillion Street, Fourth Street West. That's a high profile, but there should be a better, a higher use for the property. It's currently a parking lot and adjacent to the old Rivertown Liquor storefront that's been vacant for many years. And then somebody mentioned a need for more retail at the Schoolhouse Square location. All the ones in green are comments on park facilities, and there's a variety of other items on there. If you go on the city's, or the Comprehensive Plan website, you can still log on there and make comment and read other peoples.
Justin, can I ask you a question about the public input? So, I don't have a lot of experience with government public input, right? I work in the private sector, but did, did it feel like we, it felt like we did a lot of engagement with the community? Did we, did we feel like we got the input that we wanted or expected with that type of engagement?
Yeah. We did, we did a lot of different kinds of engagement. We did the, the surveys and the crowdsourced mapping, which is great for people that are really eager to provide input and have the time to do it, but that kind of input misses a lot of people, the ones that are busy, or the ones that, you know, are, you know, you know, preoccupied and maybe don't have a lot of time. And so that's why we did a lot of the pop-up meetings, where you can just kind of grab people off the street, whether they want to provide input or not, you know, you've got them for, for a couple of minutes there. Our survey was pretty well-rounded. We did, we, at the beginning, it was a little skewed because we pushed it through Facebook a lot, so we got kind of a demographic from there, but then we did a lot of print surveys and delivered those to like the senior center and churches, and we entered those manually. We've, we still were lacking a lot of the very young youth, 18 and under, so we did a separate survey for that, which was not quite as comprehensive because this survey was pretty time-consuming, and so we got their input that way.
Overall, we were happy with the, like, the response rate that we got, and the amount of input that we got?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's kind of what we expected.
Okay, great.
What we're looking for. So I'll go over a couple of the survey results that are kind of pertinent to the land use chapter. The Metropolitan Council forecasted for the city of Hastings, the population will grow by 30% between 2010 and 2040, which would be about 6,600 people, 3,700 households, and 2,000 jobs. And the survey results showed that over 70% thought that was a good rate of growth. It was pretty much tied for all the other categories, which was just under 10% for too fast, not fast enough, and not sure. How do you rate the following aspect of the city of Hastings? The green is excellent, the blue is good, yellow is fair, and light blue is poor. So the first one is the number of street trees is good to excellent, signage control is good to fair to excellent, noise control is, is, you know, fairly good, light control is good. Aesthetic design of buildings was kind of even between good and fair. Landscaping of properties was, was mostly good. Next, most common one was fair, and property upkeep was about the same, and aesthetics along the corridor was good, but you could see that fair and even poor was kind of sneaking up a little bit, which is not surprising because we heard a lot of comments through this plan about Vermillion Street corridor in particular, but also obviously during our corridor study that we recently did for the Vermillion Street corridor. Was, I would have hearing comments like that over the past couple of years. Community survey for, how would you describe the availability of employment opportunities in Hastings? 50% said that they're lacking, a quarter said they're adequate, and 18% said they weren't sure, and only 2% said plentiful. And so I thought I'd put on, one of the first questions, which is asking the survey takers what their employment status was. It's a funny anomaly that it said 18% were retired, which is the same percentage of people that were not sure what the Hastings employment scene is. But 61% are employed, which was, which was quite a lot. And so it was just interesting that 60% feel that we need more employment in, in the city of Hastings. Please share your opinion about the supply of various housing types in Hastings. 60% said that we need more first-time homebuyer housing, 57% said more single-family, 56 said affordability, 56 said senior housing, and there was not very much response on having too much housing. The only one that was high enough to note was 23% said that we have too much townhomes and condos in Hastings. And this is community strengths and weaknesses. We got this from a combination of input from our pop-up meetings, our workshop with the Planning Commission and Council, and the committee meetings. Some strengths that the city has that were, these are all real common, we boiled it down to the most common responses. Great parks and trail systems, access to the Mississippi, small-town character, schools, downtown history and character, riverfront regional destination, regional access is increasingly accessible, and metro area resources. Weaknesses would be lack of transit within town and lack of transit regionally, maintenance of key routes, affordable, high-quality housing, quality housing, housing for seniors, young families, and workforce, need more employers, and pedestrian safety in the cor, commercial corridors.
Are these in any specific order?
They may be, I don't think, these were all very top, we had, you know, like 100 of them. I think these are just maybe the top 10.
So no.
So they're all, they're all probably, probably, probably pretty even. Excuse me. Now I'll go over the land use chapter and the different sections of that. The first one, of course, is land use planning history. It goes from the settlement to development to the growth of the city, and then the comprehensive plan history. The natural resources of the city, less areas that are not conducive to development. It talks about the topography of Hastings, the watersheds, and the floodplains, and this is a map of the floodplains of Hastings, which is why later, when we talk about expansion of the city, why we would not be looking at going north or to the east. Current land uses, it has a description of the current land uses that are in Hastings, the amount of land that makes up each of those categories, and then this is a map of the land use. Use that exists, it's probably pretty close to, similar to the zoning map for, within the city, but there might be some differences if we're looking at making changes to the existing uses in those areas. Recent development and annexation activities, it just talks about the major annexations we've had in development projects since the 80s. Official controls, it discusses the local ordinances that we have governing land use from the zoning ordinance, subdivision regulations, stormwater management, floodplain regulations, and shoreland management. It talks about the redevelopment potential. Specifically, it talks a lot about downtown Vermillion Street, the central neighborhoods, and areas adjacent to our city boundaries that are currently in the townships where we would possibly be expanding in the future. Economic development in the land use plan, it talks about the current business activities and their needs, business expansion opportunities, and future concerns. It's got a small section on affordable housing. A lot of these are also gone, delved into a lot more detail than the other chapters for housing and economic development and parks and so on. But in our land use chapter, there is a portion that talks about affordable housing and talks about mixed, mix of housing options for new development. It identifies, it talks about identifying areas for increased density, and also infill of underdeveloped land in the city's core. There's a section on urban design. It discusses guidelines and talks about sub-area considerations for different areas of the city, and also goes over landscaping. And transportation, again, there's another whole section on transportation, but it talks about future roadway connections, including General Seabahn to Highway 42, 36th Street, eventually to go to General Seabahn, and Tuttle Drive to go to Vermillion Street. It talks about land use transportation challenges also. There's also some, a section on summary of growth potential. It talks about some of the constraints that are mentioned in some other natural areas of the, of the chapter, but this one talks about some steep slopes and floodplain areas. The arrows are talking about opportunities for growth. Again, it's mostly to the south and to the west. And then, one of the major keys to this chapter would be the future land use plan. If you're, this is areas of the city and what we are guiding them towards when they redevelop. This is both true for in the city limits currently, and then outside the city limits. On this map, the red, the red line is the current city limit line. So, you know, for like the golf course, we're still planning on that being guided towards a golf course, same thing with a lot of the commercial areas on the corridors, and, you know, the residential areas. But if you look at outside of the red line, those are areas that are currently not in our city limits, but if we received an application for annexation, we would be looking at those for the uses that you see. Of course yellows and browns would be, and oranges would be densities of residential, and then red would be commercial. And this pink down here would be a future business park, and later we'll go into the, the staging of which areas would be coming in for consideration first. The Metropolitan Council provides all the numbers for growth that we need to go off of for our Comprehensive Plan, and for, it's based on the data we have from 2010, which showed our population at 22,172, and it just shows what it would be like every, every decade after, both for population and households and employment, up to 28,800 by 2040. Metropolitan Council community designation designates every community in one of 10 categories. What they call Hastings is called Emerging Suburban Edge, which sounds kind of odd because we mostly consider ourselves as kind of a standalone city, but if you read the description of Emerging Suburban Edge, it, it is kind of similar to Hastings where you have very unlimited growth potential, there's a lot of expansion opportunities, but you're also partially developed with a lot of opportunities for redevelopment. They identified us as having a potential of three to five dwelling units per acre and higher in targeted areas, and we should plan for development even beyond 2040. Not that we should do specific plans for those areas, but we shouldn't consider ourselves being full by 2040. This is a map for staging areas that I spoke about. It's in the Key Land Use Planning Issues section. The crosshatch area is considered to be the areas that would be developed first, and so areas on the outside of those, and then areas to the west a little, east a little bit, and southeast, we wouldn't be considering as, would be the first stage for annexation and expansion. Some key issues in this section would be fringe development pattern, extent of perimeter growth, development staging, which is what that map's referencing, rate of growth, type and character of new housing needed, downtown, riverfronts, and new neighborhood design. There's four future land use goals, and then associated strategies. Goal one was to maintain a small-town character, and that's always been a strong community sentiment that we've heard through all our planning efforts and different plans and community input. Goal two is the fringe growth, how we plan on expanding the growth of the city, and it mentions that it should occur along corridors, be compact and efficient. Goal three would be neighborhood protection and improvement to maintain public infrastructure, design standards, and selective redevelopment. Natural environment, and talks about, you know, protecting those natural features in the city. So then we move on to the future land use objectives and policies. There's 13 of these, so just try to stay with me, we're almost through those. One would be land needs, to plan a significantly large area for urban growth. Sustainable growth would be objective two, to grow by investing in established areas and carefully planning new neighborhoods. Future land use plan map and future land use categories regulate changes to the city and growth consistent with that future land use map, as well as the policies from the entire plan. Moving to number four, the perimeter and regional growth, to achieve a compact and cost-effective perimeter growth for the long-term future. Objective number five is for residential neighborhoods, reinforce or create neighborhoods with a diversity of housing, attractive public spaces, compatible land uses, and a sense of identity. Number six would be riverfronts and stream corridors, guide riverfront land use to parks, housing, offices, hospitality, business, and marinas. Number seven is major roadway corridors, how to plan and, and look for redevelopment in those areas. Environment. Environmental resources is objective eight and for protection of those resources, obviously. Number nine is redevelopment, target areas, plans and resources to help achieve those redevelopments. Number ten, inappropriate land use and how to deal with those. One is through enforcement, acquisition and planning. And objective eleven is municipal expansion. It should be done sustainably with consideration of existing utilities and review criteria of how we're going to decide which applications for annexation we would be looking at accepting. Number twelve would be local and regional investments. Invest in public facilities so as to maximize their impact with a minimal duplication. Land use plan implementation, finally, number thirteen. This is the plan's basis for reviewing development and district plans. And one, one of the items I mentioned before was the resilience section that we've added to the plan this time. And, and kind of basically the resilience section is how a city can prepare for stability and strength and to bounce back from major threats to disasters. And to avoid redundancy, we've included the resilience chapter, not in its own standalone chapter, but we've included it at the end of all the main themes, so there's no redundancy. It can be everything from economic issues related to crashes, you know, what are you going to do when, you know, there's severe unemployment in your city? You know, you know, odd things like Y two K or obviously floods is a big one that Hastings has always been cognizant of and other types of disasters like tornadoes and such. So some of the goals for resiliency in, in this chapter would, the first goal would be to protect the natural environment and enhance it to mitigate weather and climate-related impacts. Goal two is to ensure the stability and reliability of constructed systems through long-term planning and consideration of weather and climate trends. Three is to encourage energy efficiency in buildings through lighting and infrastructure. Number four is to promote education awareness regarding the hazards and risks to the community. And finally, number five, the city will protect and support the development of access to direct sunlight for solar energy. And I'd like to stand for any questions that the commission may have. And again, we'd be looking for a recommendation from the commission on if this plan meets the planning commissions, you know, ideas for the type of applications that, that we review and the type of plans that we've been involved in over the past years.
Thank you, Justin. Can you just tell us, where does the, where does the plan go from here? What are, what are its next steps? What, if we provide input tonight, what happens?
Sure. The city council is going to be reviewing this on July ninth at a workshop where they're going to be reviewing the comprehensive plan and the input that's been received from the public and the commissions. HEDRA has reviewed the, the plan. Specifically, they spent time going over the economic competitiveness chapter. Same thing with the HPC, Heritage Preservation Commission, looked at the preservation chapter and the Parks and Recreation Commission heavily reviewed the Parks and Recreation chapter of the plan.
And will the council basically be approving it or adopting it at that workshop?
They're going to be deciding if they want to do any, any, make any changes to it or any other kind of input they're going to have on it. They would be directing us, if, after those changes are made, possibly to send it to the adjacent communities and organizations for comments from them. And after we get those comments back, we, the city council would hold a public hearing and at that time they would officially adopt it.
Excellent. Thank you. Commissioners, comments, questions?
At what point in time, where do, where would I anticipate seeing things that would be talking about, like affordable housing in requirements for, you know, funding from state and federal levels? I mean, are there things like that that we have to be conscious of in adopting plans so that those get implemented on down the road as things happen that?
Sure. Yeah, it's kind of a guiding document. It doesn't direct us on certain policies that we should implement immediately as far as funding and stuff, but it, it talks about what we should look at doing in the future. As far as housing, there's, there's some more in the housing chapter, but it does, the plan, especially in the land use plan, also does talk a lot about affordability of housing and, and how we allow development to occur. We can't generally, one of the biggest costs for housing, of course, is land and we don't have a lot of say in how much land is sold or purchased for. But if, if there's an area that somebody wants to annex into the city that is going to have some high costs associated with extending infrastructure and roads, those costs are going to be passed, passed down not only to the consumer, the resident who buys those units, but also to the city for long-term maintenance of those extended utilities and infrastructure. So from that standpoint, it, this plan particularly talks about how to, how to reach affordability of housing through smart growth, also through infill development and redevelopment and not go to greenfield development until, you know, our, our resources in town are already filled up. There's also some other ideas in the housing chapter specifically about affordable housing. And it talks about a mix of new developments should be different housing types. It should have, it talks about studying going forward, what kind of a mix the city wants to look at for new developments. If it wants to maybe set a, set a limit saying if you're going to have a new subdivision, you know, twenty percent should be town homes or should be affordable or should be, it doesn't give any, any answers, but it, because it's looking at it from pretty far away, but it, it says, it comes up with ideas and starts the conversation on what we should be looking for.
Interesting, because I guess when I think about the different developments, I, and I'm not real educated here, but yet just a general basic overview of different developments, I don't see a lot of differences. I see either single-family homes in this price range or, so I, I don't, maybe there's a bigger picture that I'm not seeing in my head as far as, as the development, the, the, the development area, you know, to implement in the different types and different, you know, you know, because I, I see very clearly this development has only this.
Sure. Yeah, I guess kind of recently we have started seeing a little bit more of it in pretty much our, a lot of our more recent developments are, have been R-three PRDs and they've included a mix of single-family, townhomes and apartment buildings. If you think of like Glendale Heights area, it's got one apartment building that is there. They're going to be starting a second one. In that, in that subdivision, they had a lot of common area and they transferred that common area density to those areas on the west side for the apartment buildings. So they kind of took the whole density that's allowed in the whole area and they were able to, to move it around and divide it up. And so in that, in that subdivision, we've got a, a mix of housing. In Riverwood, there's some areas that are, that are townhomes, there's some single-family townhomes and then there's more standard, single-family homes. I wouldn't say all of them have been a mix, but I think about half of the recent ones in the past ten years have had a couple of different products. And in, in the, in the, in the whole area, now they might develop, they might look like this area is like a single-family and this one was a multifamily, but they actually kind of came in together and, and the original plat and proposal was for the mix of uses.
Yeah, because I did, like the, the Glendale Heights, I mean, ten single-family homes and the rest is dense, you know, apartments, townhouses, that's it?
Right. Well, it, there also is a lot of open space there too, though, behind the homes and in between the groups.
The sloped areas.
Yeah, yeah, some of that.
So does the, this, for funding in, in such for the city and the, you know, they must go on some kind of ratios or something for new development or existing of what is nee, I mean, I, I, I would imagine somebody's paying attention to that so that, I mean, is that a, a funding issue, in my opinion, is really important to pay attention to? So I assume that, you know, we're getting it now and then the, the twenty forty plan would be, would accommodate to make sure that, that projection in development is still within what will continue that funding?
Well, as far as density goes, the future land use map that shows the areas for single, or for low density and medium density and higher density, those areas will match up with a proposed density to try to meet the, the Met Council's twenty forty growth of thirty percent. But as far as funding goes, I'm not sure what you're speaking of.
And I can interject here a little bit too. I think a lot of it's going to be free market-based as far as market demand. We go forward with the comprehensive plan, we're able to look at some of the demographic data to understand where housing trends may be in the future. And developers can look at that, get an idea of where within the city, different types of uses, different types of densities, whether they be single-family or others may go. But ultimately, from a, a decision standpoint, we're, we're not going to be in the position to direct a specific type of development or a specific cost of development any place or necessarily fund that, except in some limited circumstances on a, on a redevelopment site. Really, it's what we're doing is we're presenting our plan and our vision to a private development market so that they can make decisions.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Burris.
Justin, is there a map comparison or anything significant that we should note as far as land use changes that occurred?
Yeah, it's a good question. I'll go back to that map. Big changes. I guess one is on the east side, this area that's just outside the city limits. It's east of the Three Rivers Manufactured Home Park. That was a, I forget the term, the DNR's Wildlife Management Area. And they've been trying to sell it for some time. They did sell the, the northern section. They're still off and on trying to sell the lower section. We did leave it as, as future, you know, parkland or, or whatever because they still do have it listed as a, like a game preserve. But I, I, I see them changing that in the future. And then on the west side, we had, this area kind of was all like a mixed-use district. And from the way the comprehensive plan defined mixed use, that would be a mixed use in a singular building. So it would be looking at all that being buildings with commercial and residential together in them, which is really not feasible on that large of a scale in a market like Hastings. Our zoning for commercial does allow, does actually allow that to occur in a, in a building, have residential above the commercial. But there's been a lot of issues with getting those projects approved and having those be, be successful. So we've left the majority of a commercial. The part south of fifty-five, west of the substation is guided as residential. And the purpose of that is because it's not really contiguous to any other commercial because it's separated from the existing commercial district by that substation. And to get there, you have to go through residential roads. So it's not very conducive to a big commercial area. But further out, there's a good chance that that would be a, a good location to resume commercial on that corner or that future intersection there. Other than that, I think there isn't any large changes that are, that are significant. We just, we did clean up a lot of, you know, minor issues that we've had over the years. Plus, we updated it with all the comprehensive plan map, future land use map changes that we've had over the past ten years.
Perfect. Thanks. Other comments?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Johnson.
I don't have any, you know, planning or global ideas. I, I was reading this kind of for comprehension and, and I noticed that, what is it, on four or six, there's a bunch of repeated paragraphs. I don't know if you're aware of that. Natural resources, open space section. It starts out with certain areas of the city contain. If you look down into the three paragraphs below, the middle of that bottom paragraph in the left-hand column, certain areas of the city contain. However, the, the second paragraph in that column, however, unnecessary tree removal, you'll see that in the right-hand column. Those paragraphs are, in the next paragraph, a balanced vegetative, you see all that?
Yeah, I see some of it. I'll definitely go through it and make sure we get that cleaned up.
There's a lot of redundancy happening in. And then I was looking at the, the table on four thirteen, land use categories. And, you know, this all make, might make sense to you people who've been working on this. When I look at that table, and so these, these are the categories that the Met Council has come up with, right? Generalized for land use in Hastings. And then we go on and we talk about Hastings, single-family housing, multi, multifamily housing. Some of these categories are subsets or it takes two of the categories that are listed here in our plan to make up one of the categories for Met Council. They don't compare, you, you follow me? Is that intentionally or was that just, you know, we don't care about what Met Council's considering these categories? Have we gone a little bit deeper in, in the comprehensive plan than the categories Met Council's broken out?
Well, what we probably have in the plan is what we've always used. I know the Met Council has kind of their own categories and I'm not sure if those have changed or if we've always just kind of used our own. I don't know that we have to use. I don't know that we have to use theirs. I know they'd probably prefer it. But I guess we can go through that again and make sure it's clear what we're, which one we're referencing when we're talking about ours.
Right. Because like you look at restricted development, for example, I don't even know if that translates into this table from that council, right? Just as an example. A lot of them do. They're right there. You know, for example, you have single-family housing, but you actually have combined attached and detached, which are broken out in the Met Council breakdown, et cetera. I don't want to bore you too much. Then my concern, too, was that this data in the tables from 2016. Is there more current data? It's 2018 now, last time I checked.
Yeah, I think that's the timeframe that the Met Council went through all the communities and issued the data.
I'm sure that I can't do this every year. It's what a monster, right?
Right.
My, and so, okay, so we got 2016 data there. If you go through the categories you spell out, you're actually, you point out 2016 in the single, you point out 2016 in multifamily. You use that data quite a few places. Somewhere I saw today, under industrial, you cite today the amount of land, so that's not 2016. So I'm, I don't know if, but there's some apples and oranges here. I don't know if we're citing 2016 data or we should be citing current data. I don't know what we're citing anymore.
Commissioner, I think the 2016 is referenced to when the plan began and when the information was presented to the different communities on it. As far as how the aggregate has changed between 16 and 18, I would imagine very little.
And I could see that. Right, right. But I would think for planning purposes, you know, maybe the origin or is this from 16? Or, and then it's one category says today, I mean, how do I know what? And maybe in this, in this land use categories, I don't, I'm sure it'd be a monster to do, too. But if you had some progression of dates, here's where we're here, here's where we're here, it'd be an animal. But for a planner to look at what categories have grown and how they grew and what dates those were, so I'm just spinning off a little bit kind of from this, where's this date from? But if I knew more specifically where this date was from and maybe some other dates, it'd be a great planning tool.
Sure.
Sorry to make more work.
Yeah, no, it makes sense. I think probably all of our data is about from the same period of time. You know, when they stated today, you know, this, we started doing this back early 2017. So we've probably used the data that we had from the previous year, so.
Right, right. Well, just somehow if this, and again, the report is a great piece of work. But I think for me walking into this and wanting to look at these categories and how the city's progressed and whatnot, if it were more clear what the categories, you know, why are you giving us this table if we're not going to kind of match it?
Yeah, I agree. I'll look into how we can.
Or instead of me having to recognize or pull apart or do the math to figure out, like I looked under undeveloped and underdeveloped. It's a category in the table, but in our write-up on page 415, we include agriculture in that. So now I'm combining two categories out of the table. You know, and I mean, I can do that, but I shouldn't have to do that. I should know what you're talking about.
Yeah, that sounds like a fair point. We'll look at addressing that.
All right. Thank you.
So I had a question on the urban design section. So I know one of the charts that you threw up there had some comments and it was the, it was the one where on the left-hand side, it said, you know, there were 50 percent of, over 50 percent of the people said that we need to improve this, that, and the other thing. Keep going back. Anyway, it was, there were a lot of aesthetic things that were talked about in that slide, right? And on page 4-22 is the urban design section, which talks about the aesthetically pleasing and well-designed developments. And it states in here, in fact, that the city has not adopted community-wide policies or standards that support innovative design techniques or aesthetic standards. I'm wondering if there is more that we should be doing to improve those aspects of our community and that are, that were highlighted in that one slide that you had up there. I guess I kind of thought we were doing pretty good, actually. I kind of like the designs that come before us. The brick and the metalwork, I forget the term we used, about that class three or something like that. But I thought we were doing pretty good. But those survey results would tend to indicate that maybe we're not.
Yeah, aesthetic design of buildings. Well, you know, what they might be referencing is a lot of the buildings that aren't new. Those design standards we have are maybe, John, I don't know, 15 years old?
Yeah. My guess is that the community survey is what people see as the image. If you drive down Vermillion Street, you see a lot of vacant buildings, a lot of dated buildings. And that may be representative of the existing stock, not necessarily some of the newer, but that's just a thought on my end.
That would make sense.
Can I, I'd like to, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I'm curious that, I mean, I would have loved to have seen those slides in the beginning before even looking at some of this stuff. So I'm wondering if there's access to these slides that you're showing us. Is that somewhere?
Yeah, if you go on the project website where you found the whole plan, if you go to the main page, or actually, if you just go to that chapter, one of the chapters is public input. And it'll have.
So these charts?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure what format it would be in. I don't know, I've read these slides myself, but it'll have all the data in there from those public input. Also, if you go to the main, the homepage of that, where the plan is, you can look at all the committee presentations and there's a lot of data in there. I can also send the commission the actual raw results from the Survey Monkey that is 100 pages long and it has a lot more data than this, so.
I like the summary because for me to be able to compile and, you know, that's not going to probably happen real well. But I'd love to see these on slides, you know, to be able to reference.
Yeah. Okay, I'll send you guys some links of those.
So I guess just to follow up my question from before, that, I mean, where it does say that we have not adopted community-wide policies or standards that support innovative design techniques or aesthetic standards, don't we have?
I take issue with that one a little bit, I think. I think there's, on the commercial, multiple-family standpoint, yes, we do have design standards in place for that. Downtown area, historic Hastings, we certainly do have that. What we don't have specific design standards would be the single-family housing, really. That single and some of the tour family housing, we don't, but.
And existing commercial.
Exactly, on the existing commercial, yeah.
I've got kind of a comment and my own personal opinion on that is aesthetics, to me, aren't necessarily the cement and the, I mean, to me, some of that is green and placement of dumpsters. I mean, to me, that is just as important as the material on the outside of the build. And I mean, when somebody asks me about aesthetics, that's what I think of. I don't think of, I just look at, you know, more of the, you know, like on the riverfront or really anywhere. I mean, I'm all, it's kind of just who I am as an individual, individual is that I just like, I like the natural elements coming through to buffer the cement and asphalt that seems to be everywhere.
And we've actually got standards for those things. I mean, we have the standards about the greenery that is required, screening around the trash and stuff like that, so, for commercial stuff. So, yeah, it might be good to change that statement.
Yeah, we'll look at that. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I did think there was, I was a little disappointed in none of my self-driving comments. Self-driving car comments made it in here. Because I know I brought that up in more than one session. Particularly in the land use and transportation section. You know, there's a statement in there, you know, that capacities will be insufficient on 316 immediately south of Hastings and on 55 in 2040, assuming no roadway improvements are made well or assuming that transportation methods don't drastically change, which I firmly believe they are going to. So, I don't know, I'd still like to see something in here about us making sure that we're staying abreast of and planning for things like the self-driving car phenomenon that is going to happen.
And just to kind of add to that, I mean, I think of that, I mean, I'm just glad to see something in there about, you know, like your, you know, like the solar energy comment. In the one sentence I saw, I'm like, you know, it's just good to see. I mean, we got a lot of years till 40, you know, a lot of time between now and 40 to be able to, I don't see a lot of that in here, but it's.
Twenty-two years, it's a long time.
Yeah.
You think back to 1996, it was a different time.
It's hard to predict. Technology changes are going to happen in 22 years if you think about what happened the last 22.
What I don't, what I don't feel like is getting touched on is, you know, why we haven't had the growth that I think that most cities in this proximity to a large metropolitan area, we don't have. I don't understand that because I don't know, you know, I mean, I haven't figured out every, but when you're talking, what are we, Southern County metro area? And we don't have access to public transit, you know, stuff like that. It's just like, I just don't understand any of that. To me, the gaps between us and the first-tier cities from the city, we need connection. We should be filled in, you know? But for some, you know, I mean, and it's, there's pros and cons. I mean, yeah, you want to be the small-town feel, but you have to survive. And you need growth to keep your schools going and I think those are major factors in making sure you have a thriving community for 20 till 2014, 40, you know?
I have a question or comment on that?
Go ahead.
Do you know if there was ever like streetcars or any mass transit here, ever?
The history, yeah. There used to was rail service, interurban service between us and St. Paul one time, yeah. I mean, way, way back ago, yes.
Right, right. But not, like the streetcars that existed in St. Paul or?
I think it was more of a, I'm not sure exactly what the duration of it was. It wasn't on, I think, that type of timetable, but regular service, yeah.
So, yeah, the train.
It was a street, there was a streetcar that went from downtown up Second Street to St. Paul. But I think it only lasted like two to four years before they kind of ripped out all those lines and started using buses.
Right, right.
And then, I don't know, what happened to our buses here, but.
Exactly. I mean, and that's one of the things, we take a look at the comprehensive plan here. We're going to be using that along with our capital improvements plan, some of our budgeting documents at the city council level to look at where those priorities would be. And the discussion of transit, whether, what our involvement would be in it, what we would get in return for involving ourselves in what's called Metropolitan Council's Transit Taxing District. I mean, that's been a discussion we've been having for some time here and we'll continue to do so. I think from the council's standpoint, they want to ensure that if we're going to enter into the taxing district, that we're going to have, we have some guarantee of service that's come out of that. And that's been one of those things that's been a little bit elusive over time. We've planned for some other transit areas along Red Rock and some of the other areas. It's been difficult from a ridership standpoint. The ridership projections, that have been pretty anemic.
Thank you.
Self-driving cars fix all that.
I know, right?
Just wait for it. All right, so you guys are looking for a formal sort of head nod on this, right?
That's correct.
That this is directionally the way we want to go and that the commission agrees? So if there, it certainly welcome additional comments or questions, but I'd also welcome a motion to approve.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Burris.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2040 comp plan as submitted here in the packet. All right, thank you. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Elpa seconds. Any final discussion before we take a vote? All right, all those in favor of approving, say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, approved. Thank you.
Is there any other business we need to cover?
Sure, I can just give a couple of updates on actions that have taken place. City council met a week ago. We had the site plan for Resurrection United Methodist Church that was recommended approval here, was ultimately approved by the city council at that meeting. And so I assume we'll be seeing plans for that coming forward in the near future. We've seen one of the results of action by the planning commission tonight with Emily joining us. We welcome her as a new commissioner. And we will be welcoming Ian Martin as a new, another new planning commissioner starting up at that last meeting in July. He will be serving out his term on the Heritage Preservation Commission and joining us at that standpoint. So then we will have a full vote, which will be good for all of us here. Taking a look at our July agenda, a reminder again that we have five Mondays in July and we've transferred the regular meeting schedule back a week. So instead of meeting on the second and fourth Mondays in July, we will be meeting on the third and fifth, which means our next planning commission meeting will not be till July 16th, so three weeks from today. Taking a look at what we potentially might have on that meeting, I don't have any new applications that have come forward at this time, but we'll stay tuned on that one. There's still time that things may come forward. So that is all that I have for updates.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any other business? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.